This conference will now be recorded.
So do we have anything to say about this?
That's right.
It's not, no, yeah. But no question, that looks like it is.
It is.
We're in a couple of weeks. We should be moving in a couple of weeks. Not official, but probably two weeks. We're kind of moving at full speed. We're switching from our own IT provider to a county-based IT that is with compliance systems.
It makes sense.
There was a delay in getting the actual stuff they ordered two months ago, so my... So the building is ready, but the stuff isn't.
Well, we invite everybody else to come here.
Oh, yeah. Someday it will all be there.
Yeah. You see, we don't have a note yet, but if you do, we'll...
You know, because it's not an official meeting, but that's just we have no form for...
Okay.
We're aware of your...
One, one, yeah.
Since we all like to come from the app.
It only keeps this little...
Yes. So... It's not really a meeting because it's...
If you want me...
But you guys can still get information from those guys.
Absolutely, that's what I was saying.
Uh, as you can see, we're talking about the same group, uh, it's the concept of talking with your ministry and we might remain, uh, record and have charities on this Toyota. And temporary, and see whether space, uh, and also share services. So that's what I did, I started there. We reduce the rent per square foot to five lines per square foot in the process where we was doing. And we came up with this, which is sharing two blocks and a facility cost, we obviously took away some overhead costs and ministry costs for these nonprofits and built them back into the parks. A lot of the great job, a lot of the more programs to... Also, the central location is to, as far as lack of transportation, I would find it factorless. We're not working with meals and finding that piece of property. And, you know, just to walk to get to places and don't have the new building, if you have or if you need private, the proximity to the county seat here, I think we go, it was perfect for us. As we started to go further and further into this, we realized that where the property is located was high enough where it was a point where it was one, I mean, if I could even fluff it. So when we're talking to the three parts south, actually, spoke to, this would be really nice. We started looking at it and we think that, when we said... So we did get all the things that we wanted with the nonprofit title against every kind of ministry ourselves, tightly united way of charities. And the idea is to provide a nice building, a nice place for people to go there's for services, disabilities, financial assistance, job creation for our charities that would be passed. Have a central location. Other side of it is that the public center, which is definitely a need in your progress, very entire of county, highest point of the village. To, you know, to address that.
And the secondary is...
And we, and we talk, yeah, we were designing it, thinking about how big, be prepared then, all the people we designed, we're going through a better model.
So before the decision, you know, while you got those theory, while you're not going to be always coming to go to...
No, that's...
In our sleeves, their sleeves will be wide. The building has a central, large meeting space, about 15 minutes, 15, four conferences, training, that sort of thing.
How big is it? Well, you're putting me on the spot, it's close to that. It's about a thousand and eight.
It's square area. More, more rectangular, but similar to the...
Yeah.
You can walk down. And then there's a new corridor that goes around that space. I didn't bring that drawing anything in that... It appears what's on in the way. There's a main entrance here, a single main entrance, and there's a corridor that comes around here. Here, the entrance is here, so the main training room is in the middle. This is all office streets, office streets, some rural ministries, and then some office streets here. So that shared states, you know, since they're trying to build these entities... Yeah, so there's all office streets here, this is the rural ministries, they're included. That common office space, they keep a good chair or drop-in type of space where any of them can go in. And then another office space is here, the board, this has a full service kitchen.
Again, office space, you know, just for services, so isn't there been lots of little followers and you recently got out, is there, we've had a couple times.
And they'll be, they use that, maybe that some, you just have some less...
We do have...
It's all one story, so it's all in that accessible. There will be two large restrooms here, and then a family restroom. We said, here, there were three restaurants, two damn life, right? I mean, more private, I'd be, I'd be like, well, maybe, thank you, there'll be these rooms and towns. So, yeah, we've got totally six residential houses we have, so we staff here, so... And while we discuss, it's one story, it's slabbed and made, it's at a, an elevation, you know, even if you introduce a day, you can find a free elevation. This part of elevation is 230 feet. Because you would have the, you would have the, but basically, this was probably not a position. We were somewhere to be developed, this place. Here, what you're saying, well, they require this one elevation plus 300. Like, we're part of certain...
What's the other, you have to sort of all, you've got something like...
It seems doesn't matter, my area of...
Thank you.
Okay, so, um... I mean, there's a... I guess, well, it's also, we... Who sent this? Because it was covered by, yeah, it was all different time. It off rails once again. And all that's... We talked in terms of, you know, there's some street parking, a lot of people, it was very wide, there's some street parking all up central. There's the home depot parking lot for a lot of our older state. And then we, you know, something about the art part, where you're down the central avenue.
That's not too much, but that place probably a lot of work.
Yeah.
That's...
Because we wonder, they're...
They want to...
They're kind of trying to... Parking is my, um, little pet peeve. It's not, we can do it.
That happens.
Well, it's, you know, exactly, we have too much parking, we have too many, those are...
Five hundred and fifty.
Well, that's all for me. I didn't want to put a graph, I could prove these rules, I'm totally teary. We're too teary and not specific to, I'm building, you see, but, you know, where I, we can add it for the, we just need to meet, or even, I've only done suburbia, where we was trying to get sort of the, the, the rules, if we follow them, the larger... It was not just this. It's a lot of very specific, you know, or whatever.
Yeah, so I'm not, it would be, how many people do you expect to be in this building, most, you know, most people have never been to a new people...
I can't see that's the name. We, yes, it's a two hundred, a hundred, probably, is it? And that's, people are going to be the most, five, we're going to be on the street, and I think, I don't know, we have to stay a hundred dollars a week, and a few, especially in the base. Most people keep the streets set up, and, um, one of the things about that, I'd say, it's like, perhaps, that's, that's like, we have one hundred or four string, uh, for these things that are, it's a whole hundred, a hundred, a hundred points, that's, uh... So I think, to your point about a hundred people is off the park, you can see, that's really corporate, this is, we're in that group, so, which is the block where, you know, the central, it was just, yeah, it's one apartment space for a split fee, so, without being asked, it's 60% of that, uh, we have seven apartments.
You have 65 showing the... And we, uh, then there's the ones that are on the central, that includes these, uh, so that's the number of the law, it's a number, but taking away some of the parking that was on central, for, you know, you, yeah, probably biggest deal, but...
Yeah, but here is the question, we don't have this, we have a staff, we're on the bill, we're doing, who would have changed the laws? But, yeah, we don't see that's been at 60, 70, you know. You could see it's more like, what do you just reach here, so you can keep their, uh, parks here. We do, but if we do, it's, it, I don't know, they haven't been, it's, it's not, you know, happy to, for, you know, these things. And that would be really, most of the department, it's, it's... The one thing that should be right this far, I don't know why it's, but it's, uh, it's that spot, like, on social services, maybe the family have that, and stuff, yeah.
Okay, and then, yeah, that's, you said, you want some, yeah, they want, also...
Exactly, we, we, same thing, we skip.
And that's, 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 yeah, streets, right? But if you put it on the P, we keep it.
Well, I don't know, the job we got, we make that.
We, we then do, we, yeah, I got this map, I hate that, I'll find. So like, you haven't been there, and you just do it, this is, if I was, uh, you did something in front of you, they have you aware that you go. I'd say, but again, but they are, they know what they're actually doing, they know what they're, probably, they're doing. Right, so in my case, I don't... It's, it's, but I think, uh, on market, it was a issue that I didn't want to leave, yeah, I do. I think that's really, yeah, I've been approached before, that's why, you know, I would take this part, I was, I would do it. But, uh, the new street, that's kind of, I, I agree with you. Parking, 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 but what I'm doing, I'm understanding, exactly what we're talking about, giving this news and moving it, is, if you make that capability to actually... You can, look, I would certainly like to see, if we have, for example, it's not only small businesses, it's not, is that, what you're saying that we don't need some parking, so, I'd like to see more full, I mean, this product, this, data, I mean, that's provided. You know, kids such as this, with the four different businesses, organizations, and features. Each one of those has some sort of, you said, you said rural ministries, there's one, eight, nine percent, and it's, like, using them today, staff, it's here, which is one set of, you get visitors, and then another set of things. What could be useful is to have some, very young, just to look at, there's, and, you know, businesses, and you can go as far as, we, we have three days, but we're not, we want to help. If you have to move in, these are places, and I would give all the trades, just to see what the business, you know, yeah, those, they're watching, right? So this one, but you also can, I actually don't want to count, you know, and they, they need to, yeah, that's the idea, and, uh, we'd have to do some, you know, data, just to say, this is, you know, every secret, for me, if you think about charities, anyway, my, yeah, I would, yeah, charities, but...
Their own space, but, Sister Mary's got a large stuff.
She's very, take, uh, all right, roughly, third, okay, the, finally, that you guys, because you're professionals, you're, you, you know, it was reasonable for you to ask, particularly, anyone who's actually, I guess, has no idea who's, or, 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 but we have, we have, we, 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 so, you know, you have to do it. So you're not, you know, you get, you get people, you get, you know, over rappers, stop owning, that, we're not going to ask them, you guys, I can do it because you're professionals, you're, and you should go on, you see, you know, hopefully, really, we're, we're, my actual accounts is, uh, times a day, or a week, just to go, and it's, it's a day, and now we see how much, how many, that's a lot, and I think, then, you know, situation, I mean, maybe fewer, if, basically, we didn't, like, people, huh?
I think that's probably, uh, how I would be with the, and, um, you can, like, the same, you can...
But at least we could say, uh, you might say, oh, you could say, oh, ABC's, like, what we need, we go, okay, all right.
But, yeah, I make a difference.
So you might say, on Friday afternoon, or, I'm at eighty-eight hours, and I say, I would need forty, and this is all about it, but, remember, when, when you tell me, just know that it's based on the available space, that's not going to really fly as far as, uh, of using a lot of region groups and things.
The only organization I would find would be really difficult, and our, and that's Sister Mary's office, and the corporate grants, is really expensive, because it's, change is nasty from one, um, from McRacker, United Way, at...
Yeah, you want to meet, yeah.
I could draw, I mean, I know, but you guys, I wish you did, yeah.
There's a whole lot, there's a lot of possibilities for some good news. I mean, you've got, you've got...
I would... I would do, but when this car goes involved, they, I'm holding up the professionals, Sister Mary's doing, I ask you, you know. When you build like, these boxes, when you think, when you think it's business, on a day, you thought you'd do it, or maybe you want to fix, normal, what to do, it's, that's sort of, but, do you want more to do, or use possible for, you know, usually, we're not like some special, that, yes, we're, you know, going to be a podcast, before we know, like, it's not, I mean, it's...
Yeah, I know that this, you have a strength, and, you know, we have, you know. The person's one for her, that's, so we'll, we'll do something, but if we're doing, like, this time, it's, that would maybe, well, a lot of her just flip traffic, so...
Yeah, I mean, that's hard, so, we're all in the same spot.
Yeah.
So, so, but that, we still get, yeah.
And I don't think you're using the parking, that's the...
So that would be good data, and we, uh, never do stuff for a whole, for a street. And that, that could show problems, too. I don't really want to, for any of this, very, like, that's really, like, obviously, maybe, like, like, people that do it. Um, it's, it's, I said, the, 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 the location is kind of off, that's kind of off the wall, and we're not planning around that, for twenty years, maybe, a month, but, you just can't tell, or something like that, like, I'm playing, I'm doing, you know, so...
It's a weekday here, waiting out.
Well, waiting to know, but it's, they, they're supposed to have a tax, right?
They're saying that, honestly.
So, do you, do you work, driving through there, maybe? No, you probably don't, you know, probably a boss, we, we, it's, it's, we're down, and it's, we're playing, like, the shows, it's, like, pretty, so, keep in mind. Um, when it gets any question further, that he's just waiting out, no, that's basically my, the only, you know, part, I, uh, quite a bit, I'm, I'm very, yeah, I'll be on the, if he's going, and, uh, and, uh, the thing I have in the main, okay, is, uh, not so much because, as you said, we're, 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 that when we have these, these, uh, sometimes, on the phone, it sounds, I think, a little, so, active. And it would be, uh, cool, and general says, you know, someone, probably, like, older, so, and, I don't see that being a major issue, I guess, but, see, I just ask you a few issues, I know, so when you have people, probably, you know, saying that they're going to do stuff like that, and they're not actually doing it, that, how do you, like, obviously, we, 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 I can see they call it, I'm like, you know, and say, well, you're not the owner, you're probably, I would, my, you know, see, something that's said, and make this, you're paying the rules, you're making, that, you know, but, you know, so, and I become very untrustworthy, obviously, first day. I become untrustworthy of, of any moral agreements.
Yeah, well, I think...
I have a secret, black and white, that's, like...
Well, I think, at this, at this point, there's some sort of a written agreement somewhere.
Right, not that there's necessarily a very soon, we're not just, we have, um, different people, and, um, say, they can make, yeah, no, so, I guess, yeah, so, someday, that may be, maybe, that's, whichever, but you want, I'd tell you, it's something, you won't be in touch with, that whatever, I'm going to do, has conditions or something like that, you're used to, that, same, all that's...
And also, this should be, you gotta, I like, I don't know, I'm not sure, I'm not sure, you know, see...
I do, okay. What happens to rural ministries, the, uh, Jesus? We've located the building such that we can construct the new building without, uh, taking out the current rural ministry building. So that can function until such time as new building is ready for them to leave it. Albeit, you know, construction is within ten feet of the existing building, so they'll lose their, uh, little utility sheds for their garden equipment, that sort of thing, that's, okay, we see, yeah.
You know, they're very serious, we probably, that is, that is, probably, yeah.
But, very good, yeah.
Yeah.
Sure, normally, yeah.
So eventually, that building will be taken down, and you make, yeah.
It's, I'm, uh... This is, this is, we, we, we...
But let's, we're not...
So, yeah, we don't hear, there's a question, what happens to me?
Rural ministries, that's right here. Okay, so this is their existing park, I don't see signs of these. That's true, yeah, but, you know, it's, it's very close proximity to their western outside wall. We've got a couple of sheds right here, so, this will be difficult to do for the contractors to build all that, so, it's been done before. We've been, you know, we've worked on projects where the contractors were not allowed to touch anything outside ten feet of the building, so, yeah. They can, they can lift trusses from up both sides here, for this location.
We're going to hear, I don't think, thanks for...
Yeah, it's, yeah, it's, yeah.
I would give it, it's nice to see, and, uh, see what you were talking about, you know, it's, it's, you, 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 and, and, so, it's, it's...
Yeah, yeah, we know, these are very attached here, and I would suggest that we replace the retaining wall, so it matches the retaining wall that runs along, we made rail up there, and top to match, and then break out the steps, back there, all the time. So we're going to see if this can match slowly, when you see it.
They're all busy with that, yeah.
It's, it's, they don't, they do, they do, they do, there's one stairwell that's not, yeah, that gives the property line, you know, for, this, the biggest stairwell, is somebody else's. There's, yeah, you know, you're not, you're...
So what are these, in this, these, uh, stairs? It's a lot of discussion ahead, but likely not, but if they're able to, okay, everyone's here, they're operating, take off, now, yeah, that's it. And that's what, uh, I'm going to, I'm going to, after, uh, maybe, Friday, okay?
Let's see, how is, like, some house street, and this, any of that, okay? It is, yeah, it's, it's just barely, it sneaks into the property about three to four feet, it was right on that...
Could have been the variance, yeah.
Almost half feet. They must have, they must have something for the piece, if they're not...
You know, that is, I think, but they, okay. There's all the, well, are there anything in the building that's that?
Well, it's the floor right down there.
What? We go, of the, of this, uh, other, uh, track. So, we, we're in the back, it's probably, uh, pretty much, or any of them, maybe do something else, just go in.
Uh, we're down top. So, yeah, so very, that's.
It's not very certain, like, I mean, more or less, yeah. But it's like, it could know, necessity, this, they would be in this, uh. I couldn't say, right on our own, no. That's the one, uh, part of our part of the, you know, the part we, we're very used to now, and certainly, somebody's. Yeah, we don't think this way, no.
In fact, we just, yeah, as far as, like, states, part of the, uh, space mode, we've been watching back. In this space, a lot of properties have, like, it's.
Yeah, we thought we, uh, it's a, it's all right, that's, that's. Can you say somebody else who could probably get the, like, that's, yeah, it's, it's, it's.
It's driving, it's drives. Always got these, uh, here.
I just, I just moved, I used to be.
Well, I have a park lot, that. I know canisters, like, nipples now, and they come, yeah. No, I think that has some still, because this would be canister, uh, supported employment piece. They got so few, they just identified their jobs, and maybe in the canister, probably, they're going to stand.
So maybe there's, uh, it's not, I mean, there's, uh, there's, uh, there are areas. And, uh, they, 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 they're, 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 they're selling policies on, uh, soon, they're, uh. Yes, it's, it's, it's.
Where, where are the metal workers, basically, out here?
Maybe, because they haven't been doing it that closely. I think they have, they're all, uh.
But, uh, rural ministry, probably, uh, probably, uh, that's the, the, uh.
Now, just like, whenever I see something empty, I just, I just start to think, they're kind of nowhere, I mean, I mean, everywhere. Yeah, so, you know, that's kind of the thing, everything we do. That's, we're close, but, um.
Yeah, we're, 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 we're.
Something, fifty two, like, I think, a hundred, that's, that's, I mean. But that actually is a thing, uh, and don't, uh. I'm not sure that a little desk actually, uh, uh, you can actually, with a decision, with a, with a case. Like, there are things we have. You sound, you sound, you sound, that's, that's how it works, it's not happening. Saying, as the road goes on, it can have, you know, a lot of stuff, like, there's, uh.
There are a lot of, yes, well, I think that was, sounds like a, a thing that's created, but it's probably, maybe, maybe, uh, this.